Hi.
Fine. Motion passes five zero. Citizens by request.
My suggestion, Steve.
Yes.
Lisa, on the October thirteenth minutes, you really come back to the board with a revision? You were going to revise those amendments.
Yeah, okay.
Want to bring it the next time?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. I was just, I want to make sure because.
Yeah, they're probably.
Yep. Citizens by request, Sean Sims. About you, Phil Patterson. Sean? Mr. Sims?
I do not see.
If he comes in, we'll get him this time. Mike Petro, about a five K race.
Uh, yeah, my name's Mike.
Come up, uh, come up to the microphone, please.
Um.
Yeah, you can talk in the microphone.
My name's Mike Petro. I'm with, I work for Triple Fresh, East Fallowfield resident. I'm on a board of a non-for-profit called The Beacon Knowledge that another East Fallowfield resident, Kathy Jackson, started and runs. And we're a financial planning group that we help folks that are having problems financially just help them plan, save, create a budget, that kind of thing locally here. And we wanted to do a five K at East Fallowfield Park on Saturday, April thirtieth in the morning. We wanted to do a, it's a five K run and a one-mile fun run with your dog to have your pet involved with it. We have sponsorships. We're looking to raise about $5,000 for the ministry. That's our goal. We're figuring for a first year, five K locally with the number, we have 10 members of our board, that we would be able to, hopefully get 100 runners is kind of where we're at with it, through the, through the park, through the woods, and kind of bring it back around. We have, we have insurance policy. We have an underwriter that's ready to donate, the underwriting for the insurance policy to do the event. I spoke with the Chester County Running Store. They're going to run it. They have a relationship with Ace Portable, Ace Portable Potties to do that, to get them in, get them out. Triple Fresh would take care of all of the trash removal. We would take, we would donate the cans and the bags, collection, take it back to the store and put it in our dumpster to get rid of it. We have about 30 volunteers right now to run the registration, the running of the race, the cleanup. We have a sponsor that's looking to sponsor the baggies. So kind of be on everybody to clean up their own dog, but we would also, again, have the volunteers that will go through. And we have 20 out on the racetrack just to make sure that that kind of gets cleaned up. So again, we're looking to do it on Saturday, October thirtieth, or, yeah, Saturday, April thirtieth. 10:00 AM start time, sign in at eight. The whole thing would be over by one. We'd clean up and everything would be out by two. So just looking to, to do that.
Do you have any online presence as far as like, you know, register online or?
Definitely, it all gets run through the Chester County Running Store. It gets up on their website and you can register online through them.
Okay.
You could also come into Triple Fresh. We have registration there, signing forms and sponsorship options.
Okay, and what's the price to register?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, okay.
It was $25 for a five K solo, $30 for a double.
Did you look at the park already as far, I mean?
As far as the track?
Yeah.
Yes. Kind of what we were looking at to do is similar to the way Park Day was with the parking and then have on the tracks where the sponsors would be so they could have a table. I already talked to Mike Rossi down at Carty Center about getting a big tent.
Okay.
So they would donate the tent for that. We have all the tables and chairs for the sponsors to set up. And then that's kind of where that would be. And then down the hill, around the pond, just not around the pond, but to the pond, the bridge, up around the big, up through where the bunker is, come back around, finish around the circle. And then the, the, the dog, one mile, would be on the inner circle. Just kind of where that flat area is. So it wouldn't be, we wouldn't upset the, the park. If kids wanted to come, if they weren't involved, we wouldn't, you know, the swing set and everything would still be over.
Okay.
So we wouldn't, you know, anything with that.
Sounds pretty neat.
Uh, should be fun, yeah.
I would, I would say too, if everybody's fine with it, you know, talking with the tag, I guess, about the course and making sure it's clear and there's no logistics of it. Make sure, you know, if we go back to the woods there, if they made a tree limbs out of, in the way and all that, make sure that the whole trail's cleaned up.
And then I've reached out to two EMTs to be on, on hand that day as well as a vet who just, you know, have, have a couple of boots for them just in case, something like you're saying there, just in case they're going to fall.
Sure. Do you plan a rain gator if there's this heavy rain or? Or is this?
Uh, I, I, I had, I was going to rain or shine. That's not my plan.
Okay. You interested in honesty?
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah?
You have a dog?
Do a five K?
No.
No?
Huh? Do a five K? I can do a five K.
Uh, as far as I know, there's nothing booked on that day. And Chester County Running Store has that weekend. There's really nothing locally. And I, I Google search and put mine together like five days with dogs and anywhere near yours.
Yeah, excuse me for any time you need.
So sure to be able to draw. And we have a lot of local pet, Brandywine, La Mancha. There's a lot of, a lot of pet involvement coming in the area and we'll get behind it and sponsor it.
Mike, did you indicate that there's going to be certificate of insurance?
Yeah.
You can just attach as well?
Yeah. We'll have a, a $1 million umbrella policy for the event day.
Okay.
Which we can, as soon as, I know the day. That's kind of what we're all waiting on, make sure we got the day. Once we get that, we can get the certificate of insurance up.
Sure. I mean, I'm funding it.
Yeah, I'll fund it.
Yeah, true. So I just, I'll contact the secretary tomorrow to kind of put it on the calendar.
Sure. I'll put some up on the website.
Yeah, absolutely.
Especially once the Chester County Running Store gets it up, we can link to it from the website, from Facebook, all those outlets so that we can get some exposure to it as well.
Yeah.
But like I said, I would, you know, once the weather clears and, you know, just a couple of weeks before at least,
Yeah.
route, route out that course with tag and make sure that the.
It looks like they widened it.
Yeah.
Last time I ran through there the other day, it was pretty wide. All right?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
All right. William Taylor Neal, Rod.
Right.
Rod.
My name is William Taylor Ryle and I appreciate the opportunity to come and share some of my experience and also encourage you to use the documents that I've passed out particularly at State Constitution. I've been studying constitutional law for now. This is my 26th year here in Pennsylvania. I'm not an attorney, which I personally think is an advantage, but I don't learn all the other stuff. The, the point is everyone in government takes notes of all this. I know you just were sworn in as a new member to the board. And what I've found over the years is that very few people pay much attention to these documents, the state and the federal constitution. So I guess the question I would ask is how many of you have read the state constitution? Have a response?
I read some. I had at a con law class.
Usually con law states talk about the federal constitution with very rarely does the state constitution. In fact, I find that many people don't even know what the state flag looks like or even you have a constitution, state constitution. And yet it's extremely well-written. It's been changed over the years, but our, our freedom and liberties, security of those all go all the way back to the Declaration of 1682 and the law degree upon England and Declaration of Rights in that document. And you'll see those referenced in those. And if you focus on anything, I would suggest that you focus on my first article, it's the Declaration of Rights. Perhaps, and unfortunately, the copies that I can get now are from the House. There's a different copy from the Senate, which I find interesting. The House version has a lot of vector things in it and it's much smaller print. And for people like me, the larger print, the Senate version is much better. But if you would, the preamble is, "We, the people that are con law of Pennsylvania, be rightful to Almighty God for the blessings of civil and religious liberty and humbly invoking His guidance to do or gain and establish this constitution." I think that sets the tone for what we're supposed to be doing here. And if you look at that, the first article, it's just the Declaration of Rights. It's only seven pages long and tremendous import to everyone who's in government to respect and protect, as the Declaration of Independence says, the rights, God-given rights of the people. And the people actually are the sovereigns in this country and in this state. As you all know, those in government are supposed to be public servants. Sometimes that gets lost. And unfortunately, you're an exception. I tell you, your group is an exception to have eaten and read portions of the constitution. I would encourage it that you really focus on the state constitution. And I'll also give you a little guidance is that my experience shows that much of what is done in government is unconstitutional. And particularly all the downloading of the work into the township. The state loves this. They don't have to pay for it, so they get the townships to do it. And there's a lot of things that you do on a day-to-day basis, whether you realize it or not, is in fact unconstitutional. Violates the first article. Now, you're going to look to your supervisor counsel and I'm glad that you said you've read it. And I would encourage you to help them understand that even your supervisor's handbook refers to the fact that you need to follow growth, because it's on page four. And the solicitor's handbook has reference to that as well. So my, my suggestion to everybody is to look to the, to the law. First, look to the Lord, make sure what you're doing is moral. And secondly, look to the law, the supreme law, and understand that the federal government has very little reach into the state and particularly into this township. To that end, I've given you a little booklet called Victory for State Sovereignty. I happen to be the state director for Sheriff Richard Mack. If you know about his organization. Also, dealing with sheriffs, Constitutional Sheriffs and Peace Officers Association is the name of it. And this is a booklet that he put out concerning his case, which was decided by the United States Supreme Court in 1997. They don't go to Brady, Brady Bill, but the important thing I would bring your attention to, and I'll just read it if I may, is the portion of the order of the court because it's pertinent to what you do every day here. It says, and I quote, "We held in New York," which by the way was a 1992 Supreme Court decision, "that Congress cannot compel the states to enact or enforce a federal regulatory program. Today we hold that Congress cannot circumvent that prohibition by constricting the state's officers directly. The federal government may neither issue directives requiring the states to address particular problems nor command the state's officers or those of their political subdivisions, of which you are some. To, or those of their political subdivisions to administer or enforce a federal regulatory program. It matters not whether policymaking is involved and no case-by-case weighing of the burdens and benefits is necessary. Such commands are fundamentally incompatible with our constitutional system of equal sovereignty, state and federal." And most people don't realize that the federal government really has very little role to play inside the state. You serve so aggressively against the state, but they really don't love to have it. And if you would like to talk to me more, I'd be glad for any of you for that matter. But I leave these books with you and encourage you all to look at that when you're dealing with issues of everybody in here in your township. I've watched quite a bit of events that occurred in the last couple of meetings. I think you probably understand that and you've made a mention that you need to get things under control. A lot of those issues, in my opinion, having been a manager in corporate world for a number of years, should have been dealt with in private, not in open. I understand the, the rules and your willingness to get in with it, but you know that pretty much got out of control. So I appreciate your position that you're taking and encourage you to continue to do that and be guided by the principles that our country and the state well-founded all the way back to 1682. And base your actions and your decisions on that. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them for you.
Do you have a card or?
I, I do. I work on a low budget.
That's okay. Thank you very much.
Lisa has your card.
Solicitor report.
Hey, good evening. My name is Mike Pridey from San Antonio. I've been appointed to the solicitor's office. First and foremost, I'd like to say thanks to the board for appointing us. We look forward to serving the township in a cost-effective and comprehensive way. We're working with the board and staff on file transition issues and will continue to do so. We've handled a couple of personnel matters, none of which require any board action this time, but the board's been briefed on it. Otherwise, we've been contacted by Comcast, which has its cable franchise agreement up in May for the township. And so we will work with the Comcast representative and the board to create a negotiated agreement. It's going to be discussed in public when it's finalized and ready for your review. Other than that, I think everything else that we've discussed in our solicitor's report, which is provided in writing to the board, is addressed elsewhere on the, the meeting. So that's it. Thank you.
Legal issue, the revised fee schedule, resolution 2016-01. So we just go over that changes over here?
We adjusted the solicitor. We adjusted the solicitor fees.
Okay. That's the only change?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to approve resolution 2016-01, approving the revisions to the township fee schedule, treasure draft 11216. So comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Chester County letter regarding emergency radio satellite signal booster ordinance. I guess we need to do an authorization to draft an amendment to make the code consistent with the new county specifications, I believe. Someone had said that there's, changes aren't that significant, but there's, there are some minor changes. Is that correct?
Yeah, two or three relatively minor changes. We want to update our ordinance to reflect the county's most updated eight specs. The board wants to entertain a motion to authorize us to throw that ordinance. We'll do that through next meeting.
I'll make a motion to allow our solicitor to draft an amendment to chapter four, part two, to make our code consistent with the new county specifications regarding emergency radio satellite signal booster ordinance.
Second, do we need a motion yet on that review? Or you, we just give you the authorization for that and then you come back to the board?
Then we'll, then the next step will be, it'll be presented to the public and then it'll be authorized for.
Okay, so do you need a motion right now or not really? Do you just need all consensus?
I always prefer a motion to make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
All right, second. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes five zero. The vacancy board, we still have the open spot on the vacancy board. Before we get to the applicant, if you don't mind, if you could clarify what the vacancy board does for everyone here so that everyone understands?
So the vacancy board, the, really the sole thing that they do is in the event that there's a resignation from the board of supervisors and there is, the board is otherwise unable to come to consensus on appointing someone to fill that position. The vacancy board member serves as the fit supervisor in order to vote on an appointment to the, for the, any kind of open or vacant supervisor position. And then if, if, if the vacancy board can't come to an agreement, then it would go to the court.
So, okay, go ahead, Joe. Okay. Do you have a clarification you want on it?
So it would go to, I'm sorry, Mike, it would go to the court in the event that what happened to?
So, so if, if a supervisor resigned,
Right.
then it's up to the BOS first and foremost to try to appoint someone to fill the open spot.
Right.
If the board can't come to a decision within 30 days, it goes to the vacancy board, which makes the decision to, he and you would, would make that vote to, to replace.
So in that way, it could go to court sense if the vacancy board did not endorse a candidate?
That's correct.
In the, in the event, just so, you know, everybody's clear, if it was two-two and the vacancy board didn't endorse anybody, then it would go to the courts.
That's right.
After 30 days.
Yep.
So essentially, the vacancy board is the tiebreaker.
Yeah, that's right. And there's, it's 30 days for the BOS to make a decision and 15 days for the vacancy board.
And the, the, if the vacancy board chair makes that decision for a supervisor who resigns, then how long is that? Does he, does he, is the man or woman appointed then fill the remainder of the term of the supervisor or does it go until the next general election?
Till the next municipal election.
The next municipal election. So people, okay.
So would it take effect in January or would it take effect like the following day after the general election?
The person appointed?
Uh, no, if, if that, I guess the vacancy board member could be appointed to the board if that was approved or whatever supervisor is appointed to the board, regardless when the general election happens in, in November of this year, given that that's the next general election.
It would go to the next municipal election, which would be the following November.
So conceivably.
Oh, so it wouldn't apply for sure?
Except for the next time somebody's up. There's more of these positions.
Well, if it was a, now that's the case for next year because we have two spots open next year, both empty or up next year. If it were a non-election year for township officials, would it go, like if it was, if it was last year, would it, would we then have a special election per set?
No, no, it would be, it goes to the next general municipal election.
Okay, so it's, okay.
So there'd be three up for the next.
There'd be three up next year. Somebody resigned next year, then it would be one for the following year. Right?
That's correct.
So it would be essentially to get off your election because in a sense that there'd be three consecutive years where somebody's elected as board supervisors.
Well, now it's off. The person who, the person, good question. The person who runs for that resigned spot would only take to the, the end of that person's official term.
Right.
Okay. Okay, if there are two years, two years after that term, then it'll be two more years after that.
Okay.
And it's usually designated on the ballot as such.
Okay, so that term would be identified. Obviously, Joe and I, our terms are six years for whoever runs next year.
So the ballot shows six years, six year, and then a two-year.
Okay, got you.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions? We did have somebody submit their, their name, Mr. Tipton.
Steve Question?
There's not a, there's not a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
Sorry.
Mr. Tipton, if you, you want to speak as far as your desire to be on the vacancy board? You don't have to, I'm just.
Well, I just feel that, you know, in light of, you know, nobody else stepping forward, you know, through the last series of meetings, put out your nominations or their nominations. I just thought it would be a good thing, you know, as a resident of township to step forward and fill that position.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Tim Tipton to, as the East Fallowfield Township 2016 vacancy board member.
Second.
Comments or questions? Can you come up to the mic and identify yourself as well, please?
Good evening. My name's Wes Mon. I'm 55 Glenley Lane. Who's on, what is the construct of the vacancy board currently? How many members?
It's just a one member.
It's one member, okay. So it's pretty easy to be the tiebreaker. I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions?
I guess I do.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Tipton, thank you for submitting your application for, for the position. I attached your resume, your phone number, your address to it. It's a well-detailed resume. With, with your, you listed here from 1995 to 2014 that you're owner slash project manager for Hammer Incorporated and Tipton Home Improvements here in East Fallowfield, PA? Is that correct?
It was for part of it, yes.
Okay. Which, which part, which, with Tipton Home Improvements, was that a sole proprietorship?
Yes.
That was a sole proprietorship with, with PA?
Yes.
Okay. And Hammer Incorporated, you're listed as the president?
Yes, and that was. That was a partnership in the beginning and then it became a sole proprietorship when I bought the, my partner out.
Okay. So you had this here, East Fallowfield with the addresses, is that correct? And it said the Hammer Incorporated was from 2013? Which part was from?
Up to 2013, then it was.
I mean, 2003, I'm sorry. 2003, you incorporated?
Yes.
Yeah. And then the 1995 to 2003, was that Tipton?
Correct.
Home Improvements.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye? Are you going down, going down the line? Sorry, I was waiting to cast my vote.
That's all right. Anybody else wants to cast their vote? If you want, I'd. Carol, Charles? Can you say that louder, please?
Have you ever asked why? I'm a people listener.
They, if somebody wants to say why, they, they can, but there is no obligation to say why, even though.
I just mean, nobody else put in an application. I think it was like, got to come to step up and do it.
And you, I'm sorry, can you identify yourself if you're going to speak?
Oh, I'm Carrie Stinkler.
Okay.
I live in Rainford Village.
I'm sorry, I'm, she was asking. She was just asking why people were asking, saying that.
I mean, I just thought it was good of him to stand up and.
Mike. She's here.
I can get up.
That's all right.
No, I will.
Bring the mic. Hand her the mic.
He's heavily attached.
Heavily attached. That's why I didn't say that.
I just wanted to know what the reason would be, like, not to accept his application. And he's the only one that stood up and, you know, said he would do it, I think that's, that's pretty good of him to do that, so. I mean, you don't have anyone, I mean, what's the problem?
They don't want a tiebreaker.
Please, no, speak out of turn, please.
I, I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm just wondering why.
Yeah, I mean, you can ask it, 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 it's not required to answer. If anybody wishes to say why, you may do so now, otherwise...
I mean, it sounds like he's had businesses in East Fallfield, and he's been a part of the community, and I just don't understand.
It's an example of East Fallfield governance.
Please don't talk out of turn.
I'm allowed, it's a free nation.
Yeah, well, according to the rules of conduct, yeah, the rules of conduct, don't speak out of turn, please.
Ignorance and arrogance.
Please stop.
Wait till you have read the rules, you don't even know the rules.
The rules are in the back, and please do not speak out of turn again, or I can ask you to leave. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, motion, uh, fails to the board. I make a motion to appoint, hold on, the, the motion already passed, so we can wait, if there's another motion, you can speak at that time. There was a second applicant, I'll try, I'll try that one. I make a motion to appoint, he put in application at the last meeting. I make a motion to appoint Nelson Water as the East Fallfield Township 2016 Vacancy Board Member. Is there a second? Was there one? Please don't talk out of turn, it's the last warning, Mr. Mon. Any comments or questions, down on the motion, as I've reported? I mean, do you, is there, I don't have it in my packet, so...